All right, it's eight o'clock. We will start our agenda briefing. First, at 8:30, we will convene the Wayne County Board of Equalization and Review Meeting. Then we will recess the Wayne County Board of Equalization and Review Meeting until April 18th at 8:00. At 9:00, I called the meeting to order. Invocation will be Commissioner Bevan Foster, Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Daughtry. We'll do approval minutes for March 21st. Discussions. Motion to approve the adjusted agenda for April 4th. Special Presentations.
We do have one item to add to the agenda, one budget amendment will be put on consent.
Yeah, I see this budget amendment.
There's little explanation on that.
Yes. You'd like to?
So this is a request from the Jetport for $25,000 to be moved to professional services. They did, the FAA did a flyover study recently and found interference with some trees. And so they are asking for an expedited process on this budget amendment, which is why we're asking to walk it on so that they can get those trees cleared and not have any issues with incoming aircraft.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and this would be, we did have some fuel contingency remaining in the general fund, so it's not coming from fund balance, it's coming from the general fund contingency that we had remaining.
Is that general fund airport contingency?
No, ma'am, it's actually a fuel contingency that we put in place for really the whole county because we were so uncertain as to fuel prices last year when we did the budget. And thankfully, we've not had to use all of that, so we did have some remaining we felt comfortable re-appropriating.
So we put that where?
We're moving it to the Jetport Fund from the general fund.
I'm talking about, under consent. Put it under consent.
Oh, okay, sorry.
With the other budget.
I put it under number 18, is that okay?
It'd be under consent, whatever consent is. All righty, any other questions on that? Moving on to special presentations, we have number three, a motion to approve the 2023 April month of the Military Child. Carol, do we have somebody presenting?
Heather Winstead.
Okay.
Who was that?
Heather Winstead.
Heather Winstead?
And then number four is a motion to approve the 2023 National Telecommunicators Week Proclamation. Chris Barnes.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Will be presenting that. Then we have number five, a plaque presentation for retiring detention center employee, Queen Red. I'm assuming the sheriff will be here for that. And number six, a plaque presentation for retiring sheriff's office employee, Mel Powers. And then at 9:30, we have a public hearing to receive public comments regarding or proposed installment financing agreement or similar financing agreement to finance a new DSS health facility for County of Wayne. Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following this public hearing.
Crawford, you said 9:30, it's not?
At 9:00 a.m.
Thought you said 9:30.
I may have. Usually they're at 9:30, but I may have slipped there, 9:00 a.m. And then after that public hearing, we'll recess the County Board of Commissioners Meeting, and we will reconvene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments at 9:30 to hear public hearing to receive public comments for a special use permit for SASSR solar energy facility. The Board may choose to take action following the public hearing. And number nine, a public hearing to hear public comment on a special use permit for Stevens Mill Solar Energy Facility. Board may choose to take action following the public hearing. Of course, this is the continuation of the previous Board of Adjustments meeting. After those hearings are closed, we'll adjourn the Wayne County Board of Adjustments, reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners Meeting, and move on to unfinished business. Excuse me. Item number 10. Excuse me, we're going right along here. Let me ask you on the, on these two hearings on the Board of Adjustment, did I hear you say that once we have completed each one of the hearings that we can take action?
Yes, sir.
As the Board of Adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that?
I'm good.
Unfinished business, we'll hold a second vote on the revisions to the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance and Stormwater Plan. I think we had a missing member the last time, and it takes, on the first vote, it would have to be unanimous. Be a simple majority vote this time, so we'll have that vote again. And then we move on to the consent agenda, and item 11 is a late application for present use value. It's just one of those. And that's been through the tax office, and it's all appropriate. And then moving on to item number 12 is we move into our budget amendments, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Spade.
Okay, your first budget amendment is number 419 with EMS, requesting to appropriate insurance proceeds in the amount of $5,102.45. This is for maintenance and repairs to a QRV that was in an accident. Your next budget amendment is for solid waste, for $100,000. This is to anticipate additional revenues and appropriate additional expenditures of 100,000. This is for scrap tire disposal, we are balancing it with recycling fees that had exceeded our original budget estimate. Your next budget amendment is for DSS, for $355,328. This is for the low-income energy assistance program, and to balance with the latest state funding authorization, you do see it as a decrease. This is due to the state transitioning from the county making these payments to the vendors, to NCFAST making the payments to vendors. So they are basically taking that piece back, and we will not be cutting as many checks to the vendors, the state would be doing that directly. Your next budget amendment is for DSS, for the Crisis Intervention or SIP program in the amount of $3,012. And this is to increase that budget to balance with the latest funding authorization from the state. You have a budget amendment for services on aging for $16,619. They are requesting to reallocate funds in the transportation line item from general transportation to medical. And this will be used for medical rides for seniors that need dialysis and other specific You have a budget amendment from the Health Department for $34,614.43. This is within COVID-19 funds they've received, that is separate from the county ARP funds. And this is state-approved request by the Health Department to purchase an F-150. This has been approved by DHHS, and it is coming from these COVID funds that must be spent within a specified period of time. We do have it in writing from the Department of the State to approve that purchase. Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the recycling?
Sure. So that is budget amendment number 421. Okay.
Can you, and you said it's for recycling, the tires, you said?
So the number of scrap tires they've received to process has increased this year above the budgeted amount. They've also had cost increases from the vendor. And so we had to increase the budget for them to be able to meet what the rest of their bills will be for the remainder of the year, rather than taking that from the solid waste fund balance. We are appropriating additional revenues because they have exceeded the budget estimate on revenues for recycling fees.
I have a question for you, sir. So this is something that every year we have to go through with the tires being shredded.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is, can we see what some shredding equipment could possibly cost? And see if it would be more economical in the future for us just to shred our own tires?
How the rules is, you cannot landfill tires in the state of North Carolina. Some landfills are in the gray area, starting to shred them. But the downside is shredding equipment is very expensive to start up, and we don't know really how the solid waste division of the state is looking at that. Because they're saying, well, now it's not a tire because it's unidentifiable. But really, we don't want to get into position to where they make a rule and then we got to dig a bunch of rubber out of the landfill. So our hands are kind of tied with the vendor that we have because not many companies handle that many tires. Now, we do get money back from the state, right now we've got $171,000 back from the state. But the money that we get back from the state, the disposal always outpaces that. You know, we don't ever get all of it back. We have made efforts to try to make sure that we don't get any out-of-county tires. We're actively always looking at that. If we see somebody bring tires in we don't recognize, we get the address and verify they are coming from Wayne County. Our process here is easier for them to handle them. So they might drive four counties over to bring them to us because they can just dump them out, then we load them with the machine. Some counties, they got to hand-lace them into a trailer, a lot more time-consuming. So they're always battling that and making sure of only getting Wayne County's tires. Month of December, our haul price for the vendor was way up, but it's kind of evened back out. We're doing about $20,000 a month.
See, well.
As far as your question about the shredding, that's...
Well, when I was a kid, I had a summer job, and it was a nasty summer job, and we shredded tires.
Right.
And it was very lucrative for the company, and you know, so what I would, you know, like to at least explore and see if there is some options for us to save money because you're thinking about it, if it's $20,000 a month, you know, you might be able to find that equipment, you might be able to even start to get other counties where we can get revenue from them by shredding the product. And you know, a lot of people, they reuse those rubber pieces for playgrounds and things of that nature.
Yes, it's called crumb, is what the playgrounds use. That's a very expensive process, and not to shoot down what you're saying, I'm not saying that, but that's a very expensive business to get into. And I don't know if we can get rid of the amount of tire that we get. We haul about two trailerloads a week off.
If we could kind of explore it, I really would appreciate it. It's always an option to kind of figure something out that's going to save the county money or make the county money.
Right. If the, if the state fund would keep up with what we're, you know, outgoing costs would be as designed, would be nice, but at this point, it never really had. This is close, but.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You're going to check it out, so check out what the maintenance cost is on the equipment?
Yeah, the consumables for grinders, you know, it's, we'll put some together.
So you're talking about, I was probably 17 at the time, a long time ago, and we were doing it, and I'm sure the equipment is much better now.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yep.
Thank you so much, sir.
If I could piggyback on that just a little bit, I was looking at, I think it was Lowe's in regards to getting some mulch, and they're selling chipped-up tires as rubber mulch. So somebody must be buying it if Lowe's is selling it. But you got to get the wire out of it, too.
Well, I understand.
That's the problem, they all buy fly tires that have any wire in it, the radial tires, the wire is more of a problem than the rubber.
Right, the process there, it's a neat process to see, but it is, it's a factory that does that, not a machine that takes the chrome out.
Well, I can assure you, the company, you're shipping the tires to, they're making some money, so I appreciate if you'd look into it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Your next budget amendment is number 437, for social services. This is for Duke Energy Share the Light, and this is to increase the program amount by $4,445 to balance with the latest state funding authorization. Okay, your next budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $673.37. This is to appropriate additional controlled substance monies received. You have a budget amendment for the SOR totaling $152,250. This is to anticipate the grant revenue and associated expenditure for the asset inventory and assessment grant. This is the state grant we received from the Viable Utility Reserve. We received the official paperwork on the grant, and we do have to put in a match of $2,250, so that's the additional amount you see there. And so the rest of it will be funded by the grant. Okay, you have a budget amendment from the Health Department.
What's the number on?
You're on 443 now.
So I'm on 443 now.
Okay, all right, let me catch it.
Okay. You have a budget amendment from the Health Department for $196,726. This is to budget additional funds allocated through the state for the COVID pandemic recovery. I'm sorry, not COVID pandemic, I'm so used to saying that, communicable disease pandemic recovery. So this is, it is part of the ARPA Act, but it is going to be used to address continued impact of COVID-19, but it will fall under the Communicable Disease Department this time. And that is all I have for you, other than the budget amendment that we discussed earlier for the Jetport that's being added to consent agenda.
Allison, what is the professional services? I mean, what is, what is professional?
Professional services?
I mean, I know what it is, but who's getting the professional service?
Um, I was just reading through her memo to see if she specified in here. I don't, I don't see it specified in here. It's most likely a contract with a medical facility that couldn't be done in-house. That's where a lot of our, you know, doctor's offices and contracts with them go under.
So the Health Department contracts with the hospital or the UNC Physicians Network?
Well, they have a, they have a number of contracts, I would have to look up who all they're with, but I mean, they do contract with different doctor's offices here.
Can we identify what?
I'm sorry?
Could we identify what professional services are? I mean, I see a lot of professional services.
For just this one? Sure, I could get a...
Any professional service?
Yeah, the Health Department goes through.
Okay, so a list of professional services that they use, okay.
And how much, and how much we pay them.
Okay, sure.
One of my concerns is, for the last couple of years, all these budget amendments is coming through, and the word COVID is mentioned, or communicable disease is mentioned, and all that. What's going to happen when all that money is gone? Where's it going to come from? Well, those are grant programs that the Health Department's applied for and are running.
Once they get used to spending the money on something, you know, you think they're not going to come back?
But it's not paying for physicians, so... Once the grant's expired, the grant's expiry date, that's a common in the Health Department, in many departments. Any other questions on the budget amendments? Rolling right along, man. We'll move on to number 13, motion to establish a Budget Board of Adjustments Meeting, public hearing on May 2nd, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. for a special use permit request by Buella McLaren to establish duplexes on parcel number 2586859393 in the RA 20 zoning district on Old Mountain Olive Highway. I think Mr. Gray is here to discuss that with you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, in this case, we are asking that you hold a public hearing next month for this request, for Buella McLaren, for duplexes, this is on Old Mountain Olive Highway. Because it is RA 20, the zoning is RA 20, that zoning district allows for is a permitted use, single-family homes, but it does not allow for duplexes unless it's a special use. So she is, has requesting a special use permit to construct some duplex units on that property. So we will advertise this, if you decide to set that hearing in May, we will advertise this. We'll post a sign on the property for the neighbors to see, and we'll also send property notices to all the adjacent property owners as well, so that they're informed. And of course, we do, are required to advertise in the paper twice also, so it will be advertised. And with it being a special use, as with any special use, you can apply conditions. So if during that hearing there are some concerns or, you know, a need to apply any sort of special conditions, that is a possibility with a special use permit. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
How many units?
She has stated that she wants to build three buildings with two each, so six units total. So it would be a smaller-scale duplex project.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
But you're going to run it off safety?
Safety, yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving along to the next item is a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-13, adopting the 47th Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County, North Carolina. This is simply moving... Go ahead, okay.
Good morning. This is a, one thing we do in HR is always look at a pay plan and make sure that we're, we've got our exemptions and non-exemption positions labeled properly. We discovered that our assistant solid waste director was listed as a non-exempt position, and it should have been exempt. So to confirm it, HR vetted it, we did the exemptions duties test, and it met all the duties, so we're just requesting to label that position as exempt, as it should be on the pay plan, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginger? All righty, moving on to number 15. I mean, number 16 is a move, no, no, number 15 is a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-14 to accept $150,000 in grant funds from the Viable Utility Reserve, the Water Infrastructure Funds, State Reserve Program to perform an asset inventory and assessment study and to provide assurances as stated in the grant agreement. And this is the same item we're, you just, we discussed as a budget amendment for the $150,000, and this is also a study that's going on throughout the county with the other municipalities as well. And we finally, the state drug their feet in getting the grant agreement back to us is the reason why you're seeing it so late in the game, since the project's already been started, but they just got it to us finally. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on to the next one is an approval for RFP for roof replacement at 800 Corporate And you'll see a summary of the roof replacement bids for 800 Corporate Drive in your documentation. A request for proposals was sent out on February 1st, 2023, and on March 22nd, we received six proposal packets. The selection committee reviewed the proposals, and would like to recommend awarding to Wayne Roofing of Goldsboro, North Carolina, the lowest responsive responsible bidder. The bid tabulation is attached for your review. If you have any questions on that one.
Was all the bids for the same job, I mean, doing the same?
Yes.
I mean, there's a big variation.
I mean, from a half a million dollars. Yeah, they were bid by spec. Any other questions on that one? We'll move on to number 17, is a motion to approve change order number three for the Wayne Executive Jetport Apron Project, an appropriate budget amendment. Hang on, just, let's go back to that last one. Should that be approved with a consent, with approval of the contract conditional, attorney approval, and an appropriate budget amendment with that roof replacement? So we take care of it in one day?
Yes, probably, yes.
So let's modify that last consent, that would be with the approval of the attorney's approval of the contract, and an appropriate budget amendment, so that we can move forward on that roof as quickly as possible. Any questions on that? And then back to 17 is the change order number three for the Executive Jetport Apron Project, an appropriate budget amendment. And this is from the project where the apron was rehabbed, and they had some additional paving that was, we paid for out there. Okay. At 8:30, we'll take, we'll open the Board of Equalization, and I'll turn it over to And I'll get Chairman to declare it open.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
This is our annual process, we do every year, we have to convene our Board of Equalization Review, and the purpose of the Board of Equalization Review is to review any appeals that taxpayers break before you each year, they have the right to appeal any given year. And we're going to let Carol square you in first, and then we'll get that started.
All right, you'll notice there are bibles in front of you. If you would place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, yes, please stand. I'm going to read it and just allow you to state at the end that you agree or affirm. I state your name.
Rachel Galloway.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Wayne County, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by your personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God.
Aye.
All right, we will convene the Board of Equalization and Review. Alan, can you report?
Yes, ma'am, I sure can. We have one appeal so far this year, and it's a commercial appeal, we are working through that at this time. If, we'll make a decision on that in our office, and then reply to the appellant, and then if they wish to be heard by you, they'll be at a later date. At this point, we're not sure whether they will come here or not at this point. What we'll do is we'll recess this today, and then we'll reconvene on the 18th. And once we close on the 18th, then it'll be over for this year as far as appeals.
Is anyone else here, here to appeal?
Besides Al.
All right, we'll recess the Board of Equalization and Review until April 18th.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
I do need to get the bill or file on that, because the clerk's office.
Thank you, sir.
Where are we at?
Number 18, under the consent.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, back to number 17, a motion to approve change order number three for the Wayne Executive Jetport Apron Project, an appropriate budget amendment. And in your documentation, you'll see that budget amendment, no, that, this request. This charge, this change order is to rectify the final construction quantities in the, to account for the quantity overruns and underruns. The change order also adds additional contractor quality control program calls for additional undercut and the Portland cement concrete pavement installation. It's indicated at $38,880.92, and I'm not sure if it's in your documentation, that there were emails provided, that there were grant funds available to cover the cost on this overrun. That's the last item under the consent. About number 18. Yep, number 18. The merger.
New business.
It would just be added to the budget.
It's just added to the budget.
Well, yes.
Number 18 is under new business. Motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the new DSS health facility and the GMP contract amendment with TA 11, subject to approval by the county attorney. Number 19 is motion to approve a resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding an installment financing agreement to finance the cost of the construction of a new combined Department of Social Services and Health Department building for the county of Wayne, North Carolina. Number 20 is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement, a deed of trust, a project fund agreement, a wire transfer agreement, and related documents in connection with the financing of a new combined Department of Social Services and Health Department building for the county of Wayne, North Carolina.
And those two are results from the public hearing. You can go ahead at nine o'clock.
Could I inquire just a little bit? We're going right through those. First of all, from what I'm seeing here, the guaranteed maximum price was $30,034,486. Is that correct? That's for the construction.
What was that figure again? TA 11 will be here during the regular meeting to discuss.
To make a presentation. Okay, all right, okay. But secondly, I mean, really, I'm really amazed at that price, because that's a pretty reasonable price from what we were anticipating. The other question I would have, though, is, as we are having to finance this in whole, not only are we talking about the building, but also the equipment and the furniture and so forth. So is that going to be presented as well? Yes. During, during one of these items? Yes, it'll include, it'll include the total price for FFNE, graphics signage, appliances, everything. Good enough. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Number, moving on to number 21 is a motion to approve $2 million to the Wayne Community College for the site building, an appropriate budget amendment. This will be up for your discussion.
That's for the continuing education.
Yes. And is someone making a presentation on that?
They will be here today and do have a presentation available from Mr. Hunter.
And given everything that we have now on the DSS and health facility, I've worked with Davenport, and we're comfortable with, with that, if that's what the board wants to do.
And then also, you know, there's, there's a possibility, because there's some other grants that's been requested from state and private sectors, they, they may not need the 2 million. They may need a portion of it, and they may not need any of it. But to go through the community college system, you have to get community college system's approval. And they just need, basically, at the day, what they need is a guarantee that if these funds are needed, that they're available. But, and the funds, if they are, part of them is used, or all of it is used, it won't be no time in the future. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be further down the road. It's not likely they've got to, they've just got to have this to present to the community college board that the funds is there if they're needed, not that they are needed, but if they're needed. Is that basically about the way it's worded?
Well, and I appreciate you mentioning that, because that's my understanding, and that is that they do have some other applications for grant funds.
Right.
And, but I do also understand, in order for them to move forward with the project, they're going to have to have some guarantees.
Right. This is just basically guaranteed today.
So I'm hoping that the agreement that we have here gives us that flexibility that if, in fact, they do have any additional funds coming from outside sources, that we would not have to fund.
Right, right.
Could you say motion to approve up to $2 million, so in case they do get extra funding? I mean, is that?
Well, I didn't see the wording of this on the agenda, so I just want to make sure that we are, in fact, incorporating that into the agreement.
Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal can answer that question, because they, you know, they're, some of y'all did help with the paperwork.
I think it would be no problem at all to, as they kind of said, to have up to 2 million.
Well, that reads to me, 2 million, you know, whether they get something else or not, and that's why I said maybe up to 2 million on the contract, you know. So if they do get some flexibility in that contract.
Andrew, can you give us some, some input on that?
I'm sorry?
We're talking about this agreement with the community college on this $2 million. We just want to make sure that we have incorporated in there that it would be up to $2 million, but that if they do have other grants that are coming in, that we would not be subject to the full $2 million.
You could, you could make a motion if you wanted to do that, to put those strings on those funds. I don't see that being a problem. So whoever made.
It shouldn't be a problem with the, with the community college board either, I would, I would think.
When you, when you make that motion today to, to approve that funding, you can make it contingent on, on those conditions.
Wayne, I assume you're going to be making this motion, so if you would incorporate that, I'd appreciate it.
Ever what the pleasure the board is.
Yeah, yeah.
That should be fine.
Okay. And then lastly, on that, my understanding was that, Wayne, that it was $3 million, actually, that they were going to be needing. So they must have found another billion somewhere.
Well, I don't remember the 3 million. I know the only thing that we, I've heard basically is the 2 million, but they have, they have gone in, and it very possibly was 3 million, but they've already gone in in some things that they are, that's just like the landscaping. My question to them was, why are we paying somebody to landscape, and the college has got a landscape program? Why can't the college do it?
So they have to make some cuts.
Yes, they've taken that. That was a great big figure now, but, you know, you give enough small parts, then it'll come to a big number.
Good, good.
The 3, can I clarify, the 3 million was actually, we did do that, but that was our, that was separate from this 2 million. So it's going to be a total of 5 million that you'll be doing. The 3 million was.
We're committed on that.
Yes, we already committed on that. But when you said the 3 billion, that's, I've, I've thought about that, that that's, it is 3 million, but we've already committed prior to this, but this is an additional 2 million above that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I think they were actually wanting 2.6, almost 2.7. They came up and separate basically 700,000 before they asked us for the 2 million.
And like I said, they're actively going after other money, but this is, if, if they don't get, can't get our approval today, this postponed the project for several more weeks or months, and, and, you know, if you prolong it.
Costs more.
It's going to cost more.
Well, I think she said she didn't get an approval, that they were just going to have to kill it, because they had a deadline, a date on this.
In fact, the state, the state board of community colleges extended their deadline, because I think their deadline was like soon last week, one day. But even having a special call meeting, the state board, state community college board gave them till, till tomorrow to come up with a, with a guarantee.
She would add that to our figure. Good one, yeah.
Add that to our.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other discussions on that? Moving on to the number 22 is a motion to agree, for agreement between the county of Wayne and the Roosevelt Group, contingent on approval by the county attorneys. This is the annual contract we have with the Roosevelt Group. The monies don't change. They used to be contracted through Friends of Seymour. They're directly contracted through the county and the city now, and we're asking for approval of that contract.
Will someone be coming here in, in the near future from the Roosevelt Group?
We hope so.
I mean, because we're just giving money. I want to know what they've been doing as far as.
Well, actually, last year, we didn't pay them, so they didn't, they didn't do anything last year. The year before, they came, and we had, they had a presentation at the Maxwell Center.
Yeah.
That's the only time I've ever seen.
They will, they will come, I think.
Yeah.
We will question.
And Mayor Hamm said they passed it last night, their board meeting contract.
But the city and the county need to have a pre-audit statement on this.
Yeah, that was subject to attorney approval, so. Moving on to any questions on that, further on that. Moving to 23 is a motion to approve the 2023-2024 agreement and budget between Wayne County and the North Carolina Economic Development Region. This is our economic development agreement, partnership with Green, Lenore, and Wayne Counties. Inside your document, you'll see the contract, and you should see the, the budget. Yeah.
We would include this in the.
The budget.
Budget ordinance. Yes, sir.
Right. The budget goes up from 175 for this past year to 211,74177 is our share.
Not a great, we'll also have to have a pre-audit statements from each county, including ours.
Did the other two counties, what they contribute, did that also go up, or did it go down?
Now, went up. Okay. So what you just said, Mr. Moore, is that need to be included in the motion? What was it? It's subject to attorney approval, and I know it's not. We can just make it subject to attorney approval, and that'd be his comments. And then we'll make sure that's added.
Was there a reason it went up?
Uh, well, they've added a person, an employee, and the state of North Carolina Department of Transportation reduced the amount of funding that they were supplying to it. And might I add to that just a little bit, and that is, this position that was added actually is going to help us immensely, because that position is for project management, to manage the construction of projects, rather than leaving that, all of that being placed on the executive director, or you. So. That's all three counties, though. That is correct. He would actually be working for all three counties, but right now, our, our county is the one that has two shell buildings, the Mount Olive Pickle project. There, there, there's a lot of projects going on.
I think, right, the street project.
The street project, so. And of course, the Goldsboro Business Campus. So, hey, we felt like we came out on the better end of the stick on that one. Right. I think it's worth the money. All right. Any other questions on that? Then we move on to public comments, county managers' report, board of commissioners' committee reports, closed session. Then we'll recess the board of commissioners' meeting at 12:00 p.m. and our local government meeting at the Maxwell Center with our towns, and then we will reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting and adjourn after lunch. So we going to get through all this before 12 o'clock? I don't know. Y'all did add a whole lot to this agenda.
So maybe, so, I think the team is.
We have closed session. If you want to do it now, we, it's not a lot of time, or just take a break before your meeting.
Just take a break.
Yep.
Madam Chair, will recess until 9?
Yes. We'll recess to 9 o'clock.